We'll call the meeting to order. As we begin our meetings, would everyone please stand and move your heads here and join us as I say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So you don't have anything extra for us this evening, does anything else? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
Brenda.
Brenda, on the approve?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion. All in favor of the agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Katie won't be with us this evening. Illness, and Bill, I expect him here, he just might be trotting in a little bit late. Schedule presenters. The Code Blue presentation by Pam and Jennifer. Quick handoff to you, or?
Sure. Pam and Jennifer have agreed to give us an update on our Code Blue safety precautions in school and what they are and how we handle different emergency situations during the day for informational purposes. So I'm going to click on this and just let me know when you want me to move the slide.
Okay, Hammer, you can get started.
I'll start when you jump in.
Okay.
We have, in each building, we have a Blue team, which is another name for our medical response team. And that's a team to help students, staff, or visitors who are having a medical crisis during the school day in, on campus, in one of our buildings. The teams include nurses, administrators, office staff, and teachers. And it's about sixteen to seventeen members in each building. We do strategically pick staff from certain parts of the building, so we have somebody down the first and second grade wing and somebody down the fourth, third, fourth, fifth grade wing if there's a Code Blue to respond. Next slide. This is the slip that is on all our emergency clipboards in every classroom that's hanging by the door and just has instructions about different types of emergencies that could pop up at school. The Alice, of course, and the fire emergency, and then the medical emergency is more the Code Blue thing. We encourage staff to go ahead and call 911 if it's obvious that there's a situation happening in their area that's going to need EMS. Let's get them called and get them on their way as soon as possible. It's possible to call a Code Blue overhead page from the classroom, so the number is listed there that they can dial just to, so it's available to them and then they can just go overhead and call a Code Blue to their classroom or wherever they're at.
And everyone on the Code Blue team knows when that announcement is made, that's the first step that initiates that team. So we're pretty specific. Unfortunately, at elementary, I feel like we've gotten pretty good in a routine of how this works because we've had them and so Code Blue is called and so an announcer would come over and say Code Blue in the main office or Code Blue in the first grade commons area. The entire team of sixteen to seventeen drops whatever they're doing and their teammates obviously know, like, we inherit this group of kids and there are people assigned that would be grabbing every AED on their way, so we would rather have three of them there versus not. And so I think that's a big piece of this is just knowing when it's initiated, and I think both buildings do a really nice job. Pam leads the charge in this and has been very persistent and consistent with making sure that we're doing the drills, that the bags are updated, and we'll talk, you can go to the next slide. So CPR certification and first aid training, that is true to all members on staff. They need to be trained in both first aid and CPR on an every other year basis, but Code Blue members have to be trained and recertified. We do that camp every, every year.
Every other year, yeah. Well, the certification for thirteen years.
And so, and we would recommend that they even take that refresher or talk to someone in the nurse's office. And we also encourage, if it's not something you want to volunteer every year, like, we need to know that because we need members that are intentional about the training and taking it serious, when we always have really good luck of some passionate Code Blue members. Epilepsy training as well. And then all Code Blue members need to know specifically seizure medication that is kept for that particular student that may have a history and where that's kept.
Yeah, and also EpiPens. We have quite a few EpiPens in the office for students with severe allergic reactions, or just a variety of supplies that they might be sent to get in the event of the Code Blue.
And we do a drill every, every, once a year, we've, Pam and I have tossed around the idea of needing to do it on a trimester or maybe a couple times a year, but what's really important is when we are doing those drills is we treat it like it's, like, this is legitimately not a drill and I think that has paid to our advantage, not only in having real drills, but like, you know, real instances, but treating them all like it's a real life situation. This is my eighth year in the district and sixth year as building principal and while hearing that Code Blue every, you know, every so often is, is, you know, a little bit hard to hear and see the team kind of go into action, but when we debrief afterwards, it's incredible. Going through and seeing like what went right, and that is the biggest part that I find most valuable in any of our Code Blue procedures is the debriefing after a live incident. We get the entire team, whether you're on the Code Blue or maybe you just happen to be there when the child or staff member went down, and we go through like what would we have done, what could we have done, how that kind of panned out and go from there, and that is really a huge part of the process. In fact, Pam and I then have a debriefing after the debriefing just because it's that important, what could come out of that. And, you know, sometimes it's just, it's little things, training staff on when we clear the hallway and, I mean, even a situation we've had, we think about in the cafeteria, you know, our number one job is to provide, you know, medical care to someone, but we also need to make sure that that is out of the eyes and ears of students and staff to keep that confidential. And how we can better that process, whether that's taking kids out a different door or, and making that really clear, because Code Blue members know that, but their number one job is the person that is on the ground, so.
Yeah, I think I have a couple more slides there. We may have covered most of it already. We have three AEDs in each building, and like Jennifer said, we'd rather have all three of them show up than not have one come. That's pretty well drilled in. Usually the admin member of the Blue team or the building secretary lets the rest of the administration know and the other building nurse is called just to make them aware of what's going on. And the debriefing meeting, like Jennifer said, that's huge, I think, just to talk about what we did right and what we might do differently. Yeah?
A good example of that was when we did our fall drill here in this building, we realized that we didn't have anybody on this, the east side of the building that was on our Blue team anymore. So we went out and did a little recruiting. Asked Josh Davidson if he would be that person since he's right there and there's an AED right outside the district office, so he agreed to do that for us. And that's part of the thing that we talked about with having the right members on the team is we want to have somebody who's kind of in each location. I think we worked really hard to make sure that that happens.
Yeah, in my short time here, I think it's been a success in each each time it's enacted. You never want to see it enacted, and I think you made a reference of we were getting good at it, which you never want to get good at it, but.
Yeah. Good when we're good at it.
Right.
And we've had to practice some situations where, you know, we've had a Code Blue in this building when we have kids in lunch in cafeterias, so not only do we not want kids, you know, around, we want them away. Mostly just for the, you know, for the the student or the adult who is experiencing a medical issue. But, you know, we've had to clear the cafeteria and find a different place for kids to finish their lunches, so it's, you know, it kind of depends where and when during the day these things happen. There could be, there can be lots of different scenarios that go on with this.
That is all the slides that I have, so, you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I had a couple. So I know Pam, I talked with you about the use of the AED and that it's suggested to be placed when somebody goes down, if it's looking like a little bit of irregular breathing, gasping, whatever, it's suggested to just be placed regardless. So if it has to be used, it's already on, that step is already done. Those seconds are saved, kind of thing. I don't know if you guys kind of looked into that or chatted about that a little bit.
I did talk with the nurses more about that after we spoke, and yes, that's.
For sure.
Yeah.
Just to save time, right? That way it's already on, press the button, we're done, that type of thing. The other thing I was thinking of, I don't know if you've seen those new little things for choking. I don't know if that's been in consideration for schools, but it's borderline like a suction device, basically. There are a couple different brands out there. Some of them are multi-use and some of them are single use, but it's basically a full-throated method, if you will. You place the device, you know, it's like a mask almost, suction cups, and it pulls out whatever the item is that the adult or child is choking on.
Versus a Heimlich?
Correct. A lot more effective than the Heimlich, actually. So, and I believe they can just be purchased on Amazon even. But something to maybe look into, something to add to the list, because, I mean, obviously a Code Blue team, I mean, no matter how many times you practice, it's terrifying and nobody likes to do it, right? And it's scary and if the Heimlich is done incorrectly or if the item just gets lodged farther down, you know. But they do have those out there and they work really well. And they don't, and they're, they're under fifty bucks, I believe.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
The other thing I was thinking of is you guys do the drills, you know, for different Code Blue type scenarios and stuff. Has anybody chatted about potentially doing an Alice drill practice round with the police department? Does that happen?
Yes.
It does happen, or it's talked about?
It's talked, we, both buildings do their evacuation routes and the police know about all of our procedures. We just had a big safety meeting with basically the whole admin team, a lot of people that are here, Pam, EMS was here, police chief couldn't be here, Josh Hansen from the county was here, and we had four members from the Minnesota School Safety Center here, and we're in the process of going through and finding out where our strengths are, where we can improve and things like that, and then potentially moving forward with something like that.
Yep.
And you're talking about a drill where students wouldn't be on.
Correct, so the other, some of the other schools that I have chatted with that have done these, they do on a day off. Right? Like a teaching workshop day or whatever, and they have like an actual bad guy in the building and call the police department, clock the time, how long it's taking you to get here, actual dry run.
So we do it with Nerf guns?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we do that, and we did it just this last August?
Yeah, we do a big training with, with staff.
Yeah.
Every, three years?
And so we have things that insinuate a gunshot and all of that, yep. Actually getting police here in that like timely fashion. I'm only, think it'll even be a part of one when we actually have them come here.
We're looking at doing a tabletop exercise with full-on EMS, so they're doing what they do, we do what we do, and
Perfect.
Then we'll have a follow-up after that.
And six years ago, I was trained with people of our police department who are still active members of the department in Alice in particular, and so we're all certified trainers in that, and so it is a requirement as part of being an Alice school is to make sure that we're up to date and making sure those drills are being done. Perfect.
I was in Cannon Bells when, and one of the nurses came in when the last Code Blue happened, and I could tell something was going on, and it was really, she came in and we chatted and it was refreshing to see not only her care, but she walked me through what was going on and what happened, and gave anything she shouldn't, but as a parent, it was really cool to see, and she talked about debriefing. You could tell it was almost her debriefing to just chat with someone, but.
Yeah, that's part of the whole process is being able to talk to it as well.
Yeah, it was, it was cool to see after the fact and, and just so glad, I appreciate it, so, thank you.
Really important for us to visit the things that we don't talk about so much that are still vitally important to us. We've talked about safety several times during the last year of our students, of everyone in the building, so this was, this was my little jab, and I thought it was necessary, especially knowing that it's, it could be done a few times a year, and the coordination is impressive. So, thank you for that, and thank you for coming. Okay, moving on. Cannon Falls Ed Foundation presentation.
Yes, we have Jerry Geiken and Ginger Bauer here to give a presentation. Not only of what the Ed Foundation is, but also some change in the bylaws that the board will need to approve at its December meeting. So I'll turn the meeting over to those two.
You know, if you want to get on camera, and I want you to be on camera, you'll have to stand over there by the flags. I appreciate it, and so would our community.
That's great, Bob, thanks.
I'm Jerry Geiken, this is Ginger Bauer, and thanks for giving us a couple minutes to give you an idea of what we're, what the Education Foundation is doing and some changes that are coming up. I wanted to, I'm going to give you a little bit of history and kind of bring you up to the present very shortly, very brief, but. And I'm not a public speaker, so I'm probably going to read most of what I've got here. So the Cannon Falls Education Foundation was started in 1993 by a group of business people, community members, and school administrators. The intent at that time was to be an organization that could come alongside of school staff to provide funding for educational enhancements in the classroom that are outside of the school's normal budget. That still is what, that's what it has turned into, and that's what we continue to do this many years later. And the foundation is made up of a crosscut of our local society. We try to make sure that there's business people, parents, grandparents, teachers, and alumni that are on the board. We want to make sure that we have people with varying talents to bring to the foundation, as well as people with varying opinions and different insights as to, you know, the different things that are happening in education. We want to stay relevant with education and we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the kids in the, in the school district. On the foundation as well, the administrator, the superintendent, the principals from the buildings take part in those meetings and answer questions when we have questions about how something might fit into what's going on in the schools. And then we also have a school board liaison, and Brenda has been a very good liaison for us for the last several years, and we really appreciate it. We'll miss you when you go. Those positions, the school principals and the liaison are non-voting members of the foundation. And the foundation has an endowment that we, that has been building all of these years. That was how it was started and that's what we work off of. It's been generally generously funded by local donors and businesses. In 2017, the foundation was the recipient of a very generous estate gift from a woman that was, that lived here in town at the time. And it gave the endowment such a boost that the annual funding budget has increased from several years ago, the budget for spending in the district was about thirty-five thousand to forty thousand dollars. And now this year, the budget is ninety-six thousand dollars. So we've made some huge changes. And in those changes, these last few years, we've been kind of just trying to figure out which direction we're going and where we're headed from here. But it's been fun to see that grow like that and be able to do so much more for the students. In 2020, it was easy to spend that excess budget because we did a lot of things that helped with the distance learning and all of those things, and now we're seeing some requests come in for things to help kids get caught up in, you know, the things that they missed in those two years of weird education for everybody. And now we're hoping that the teachers are getting, and students are getting kind of settled back into what we'll call a normal routine, and hopefully we can start to see more innovative and creative, has always kind of been like key words for the foundation. We're hoping we can kind of get back to some of those type of things to help spend down that budget. So we've got, right now, our program balance for this school year is seventy-seven thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars that we'll have to spend still before the end of the school year. With that significant increase, the endowment and the increase available in funding dollars comes some challenges for the foundation as far as, we want to stay, continue to stay relevant in the community, make sure that the community knows that we're still there, make sure teachers know that we're still there and are aware of that. And we still want to continue to fundraise and keep looking forward because we hope that endowment is still here a hundred years from now and serving the education of the students here. So we're trying to work with that and figure out how to best do that, and we've tried to, as a board, we've been trying to figure out different ways that we can fundraise and, and at the same time, give back to the businesses that have been so generous to us all of these years in support. And one of the things that we've done with that, and some of you have participated, is the poker social that we've done the last, I guess we did, this is our third year in the fall, where we're kind of giving back to businesses. We have seven businesses that everybody goes into to collect a card to make up their poker hand, and it just has been a really fun event, and it's been nice to be able to give back to the businesses that have supported us all that time. Ginger's going to bring me up to speed on what we've got going next.
Okay, so one of the big things that we're, we're here to discuss tonight is we need you to approve updated bylaws for the foundation. And we have two main goals in having those bylaws updated. One is to clarify the language, and two is to reflect how we do things today. The first part of the bylaws addresses members of the corporation, which simply means the school board. The second part addresses the board of directors of the foundation. And our goal with the change is to, is to clearly differentiate between the language of Cannon Falls Education Foundation responsibilities and the responsibilities of the school board. Overall, the school board serves as a check and balance for the foundation. You'll notice that corporation is now foundation, that's updated language for the C and H. Both sections are designed to be clearer regarding if it's talking about the school board or the board of directors, because there were a lot of references to the board in both sections. And it was very confusing to know, are you talking about the school board or are you talking about the foundation board? So that was one of the main goals, is to clarify that information. The second goal, how we do things today. The original bylaws dictated, for example, how, when, and where the members or the school board would hold meetings of business pertaining to the foundation. In reality, the foundation cannot dictate school board procedures. You have your own procedures about when you have your meetings. And on a practical basis, all of the business that you would have that pertains to the foundation would be done at a regular school board meeting as part of your agenda. So any business that falls under the purview of the school board is handled that way, and we wanted the bylaws to reflect that. We also felt it necessary to update language pertaining to things like how we keep records, remote attendance for meetings, and email communication. The current bylaws, for example, mention that meetings could be announced by telegram. So we felt that it was important to update that. One of the changes in modernizing is decreasing the number of members. The range that in the current bylaws says eighteen to twenty-four members, and we want to pare that down to ten to fifteen members. In a conversation that the board had with Kathy Brecken, who was instrumental in starting the foundation, she explained that one of the reasons they set the foundation up with such a large board was to get that good cross-section of as many business people and community members that Jerry mentioned a little bit ago as possible and familiar with the foundation and its purpose. Now, thirty years in, we've had a large member, a large number of community members that have served, and it gets a little harder as we get in to find people that are, that are going to be fully participating. And so we feel that it is more constructive to have a full board where all participate, rather than to have a large board where seventy-five percent participate. And also, we are simplifying some of those fundraising measures that we're doing, like the benefit auction. We're simplifying that this year. So it takes less people to run that. And so that's why we feel it's, it's a good time to pare down those members. And then the other change is we'd like to increase the term of three years to four years. When serving on the Education Foundation Board, the first couple of years, you're just kind of getting your feet wet. You're getting to know the, kind of the flow of that first year, and then getting involved in committees and helping with the fundraising. So by the third year, you kind of know what you're doing. But then it's time to leave. So what we'd like to do is have that fourth year to be able to mentor the next group that's coming on. Now, we do have the option of serving on a consecutive, a second consecutive term. And then members can also go off the board for at least a year and come back on later. We don't want to change those two things. We would like to give people the option of serving the consecutive term and come back later, so those aren't going to change. These changes that you see redlined here is reflective of, we had an original printout of the bylaws, but that was it, no electronic version. So we had to scan those into a PDF. The PDF then had to be converted to a Word document, and then they kind of manually go through and clean that up a little bit because, for example, the Roman rule three was converted to an M. So if you go through and you notice something a little odd, I tried to make sure that everything was how the original was, but if I missed a character or something, you might see over on the right. If you have any questions about these changes, please reach out, ask, because we would like you to have these reviewed and ready to approve at the next board meeting. We will follow up with, there's like some signature pages that have to be filed with the attorney, so that will be included with the final version. You should have gotten this version that you're seeing with all the markups, and then the version that's all clean without the markups.
We got the documents last night, so I've linked them to the board packet. And so tonight's first reading, you know, you'll get the information tonight, and then we'll have a exercise of you approving the first reading, but really the next meeting is where you'll finalize at the December meeting.
We should have said, Ginger and myself and Brenda and Jeff worked on, worked with the attorney on rewriting and figuring out what language we could and couldn't change, and so it would have been a lot simpler if there wasn't an attorney involved.
Can't get that legal language.
And then the other thing that we do need to clean up also that you'll need to sign on is in 1993, when the Articles of Incorporation was issued, the name of the foundation was listed as the Cannon Falls Educational Foundation. And so we're going to have to refile that as Cannon Falls Education Foundation, which is what we're widely known as, so. That will be another, it's just a signature page and then a refiling on that.
Right, but it's one of those checks and balances, you guys have.
Right. We just figured as long as we were doing this, we might as well clean that up and change it to what's commonly known, what we commonly go by.
Brenda, you're a liaison, anything to add?
Yeah, I sat with Jerry and Ginger and went through the bylaws one evening, and Ginger, where they both worked with the attorney to do all the legalese and everything that needs to be, that needs to be written, so they did a good job with that. And I would recommend approving the first reading, or making a motion for that. I'll vote for that.
Oh, sorry. Brenda on the motion, Luke on the second. Let's finish our discussion. Just thank you to the foundation. It's, I wouldn't say we take you for granted, but without you, we'd be in a lot more financial difficulties, and I'm sure the principals will attest to that. You've helped out the district tremendously. Harvey, it's for me. Did you anything other than accept that because you've done a lot of work on it, you've had an attorney consultation, and I'm sure you got the blessing of the principals as well.
I don't know if they've seen it yet, but you'll have to take a look, and if you have questions, let us know, but the foundation is, it's really a very rewarding organization to be a part of, just to see the small community come behind the students all the time. Anytime that we have a fundraising event, I just always, I mean, it's a lot of work, but we go home just feeling so good about this small town that we live in, because they're all there to back us up.
Right, and when we see the fruits of this coming to the classroom, when we get feedback from the teacher, it's very rewarding to, to see the students benefiting from, and the school benefiting from the work that we do. And Jerry spent a lot of months consulting with the attorney back and forth, so did a lot of work there.
It's been good.
Anyone who's ever been to our silent auction
Yes.
in the spring, I mean, it's
It's a lot of fun.
You can hardly even walk, there's so many people there, and supporting, supporting the school, that's exactly what they're doing.
Yeah. It is, and it's just always, it's an exhausting day, but it's so fun to go home that night knowing that everybody has had a good time and put out some money for the. and put out some money for the students. We always say it's, it's for the kids.
And without the support of the community, we wouldn't have the, the ability to, um, to give back, to give these grants for the school. So the community really deserves the, the most of that, but it's the best.
Does anybody have any questions for us?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for giving us some time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So at this time, we've already got a motion and a second on the floor for the first reading. Is there any other discussion towards that? If not, all in favor of the first reading of the amended bylaws for the head foundation, say aye. Opposed. Carrie. Annual public meeting. World's Best Workforce Plan Document. Mr. Sampson?
Yes, um, each year we have to have a, a public meeting with public input. We've already ran the updated version with the updated goals to the curriculum committee. And we've submitted the evaluation piece, which is the second link document on here. And I plan on just giving a quick update on the goals that were set for this year. So if each, each principal can talk about the goals for their building here, and I will bring that up. But this document is a living, reading document on our website. And so, um, I just gotta find the goals.
Keep going.
There we go.
There you go.
So who wants to go first? I see the elementary school is up first.
I know, I'm always listed first. She sees. Um, okay, so twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, school olds. We always take a look at it, no matter what you're teaching, what grade level you're teaching, kindergarten, preschool. We really do, um, surrounded by the M C As because we are all kind of putting forth our effort. M C As, um, are driven by Minnesota's standards, so that really is that, that benchmark. So, um, while I do believe personally that five percent is a lofty goal, um, at any time, that has been what our P L Cs have decided on, um, keep it lofty. So those are our goals in reading, math and science. And you can see that five-
For your building, right?
For my building, yep. That would be over the course of the year, our goals to improve by for the next round of M C As. Uh, then we move more specifically into P L C goals that are going to be kind of like, M C A scores are the umbrella and then falling underneath that are our P L C goals for each grade level. I don't suppose you need to read those to you. You've all had a chance to look at those. If there are any questions?
Uh, middle school, high school goal, goals, um, look a little bit different than the elementary. Not so much focused on M C As, but focused more on, uh, achievement and, as measured by classroom assessments. The reason we do that is because we have really English, math and science are the three departments that are kind of driven by M C As, which leaves a whole lot of departments in this building that aren't. So, um, when we started our P L C process, the whole goal of P L Cs was to increase student achievement in, in every curricular area. And by doing that, we should see increases in our overall M C As as a kind of a corollary to the two things there. So, um, so you can look, probably what's more important is to look at what each individual M C A, or each individual P L C has set as their goals. A lot of them, uh, some of them are, are around, um, some things that may look a little esoteric, but, um, really the whole idea is either increasing relationships with students, which we know increases student achievement or, uh, you know, some things around that area. We've done so much with, um, assessment, uh, design and, you know, making sure our assessments that we give in classrooms are appropriate and, and valid, um, that we're looking more at some, some different areas. Plus, these goals are kind of lingering goals from our times with, uh, the COVID years. So a lot of it has to do with relationship building and, and making sure the students are comfortable, um, being in our space and, and comfortable, um, with our community. Overall, again, we're looking at a two percent increase in our, in those assessments, uh, in each P L C area. We also have goals, um, that are on the state evaluation sheet to talk about, um, A C T performance and, um, graduation rate, so.
Switch over to that real quick.
Sure.
And so this is the performance as measured from last year. And so this is the evaluation of goals that were set off last year. And we'll see, obviously, we set high goals and we had just coming out of a pandemic. So some of these we've met and some of these we have not. Obviously going through a, a pandemic, uh, will cause some of these things. So, I don't know if you guys want to take these in your area, like all students ready for school and?
Sure. Um, so this particular goal is hyper-focused into preschool students. Reach an aggregate of eighty percent in math standards. We chose math because that's our most recent new curriculum. Uh, it's not really new anymore, but, and coming out of last year, we were at, um, seventy-five percent achieving of their math standards. Um, all students in third grade achieving grade level literacy by the end of twenty-one. Third grade students will reach sixty-one point two, um, proficient on M C As. And our result, which is not new information to any of you, was that we were at thirty-seven point three percent proficient. So goal not met.
And I think the third grade scores over the years are pretty consistent in those sixty.
Yep.
Level, so I see that as a one-off.
So this goal looks at overall, um, achievement of our special ed students. And we're looking at a four percent increase in reading as measured by M C As. And we are on track to meet that. This was a multi-year goal, I think. How many years did we set for this one?
This is a, it's a-
Was it a three-year goal? Okay, so we're on track, um, to meet that, uh, at the end of our third year, which would be, this would be the, next year, we'll be evaluating our goals for this year, which is the third, this is the third year for that goal. So that one, we're on track for. College and career ready, we looked at, uh, A C T performance, um, and getting an A C T, uh, score of twenty-two or higher. So this, uh, measures the students who took the A C T in, in, uh, the spring of twenty-one. And we were at a twenty-one point eight, um, that year. We do have results back, um, for this year when we, we have met that goal for, next year when we fill this out, we'll be able to check that we've met that, so.
And have, have you talked about the A C T scores that we got back in aggregate for Southeast?
No, um, I haven't, but, um, we had Sarah Ness from, um, the Southeast Service Co-op come and talk to our staff, um, in October about, or was it November? I don't know, November?
Early November.
Yeah, uh, about STEM programming and STEM forward. And one of the things she was very complimentary of was, um, our school's A C T performance as compared to the state. In fact, I think her words were, "We're rocking it." And, and we had really good, uh, A C T composite scores from, from our group of kids who took the A C T in the spring of last year. So, um, it, it's, it's really gratifying to see that because ultimately in this building, while we want to see every group of kids do better, our ultimate goal is to see kids that leave here on track to do whatever they want to do when, when they leave. So that A C T component is a big one to show that our kids are ready, uh, especially the kids that are going to go to college, are ready to take that on. The other, uh, goal for us is, uh, our graduation rate. And, um, this is, this is a continuing goal. And I didn't, I guess I didn't mark the, or we didn't mark the goal status on this sheet?
It is, it's on track.
It is.
Is it? Okay, there it is on track. Okay. So we're on track, uh, for that. This is going to be a difficult goal for us to meet because it, the first, being a percentage goal with the number of students that we have in each class, if you have one student one way or the other, really throws that percentage off. So we're doing it, we're doing a really good job with graduation. And I would say, if you look at the number of students that we have that fulfill graduation requirements by the end of June, so after their graduation date, we're really doing well. So we have very, very few students who completely drop out or who don't finish getting their diploma within a month of graduation. So some of them have to do a little bit of credit recovery during the summer. But we do a really good job of getting through that. So our four-year cohort has been around this ninety-three to ninety-four, um, number for the last several years. But if you look at our five-year and our six-year cohort graduation rates, they're really, really outstanding. I think that's it.
I think that's the last of the five areas of the world's best workforce. The other is the achievement integration, which will be coming probably next year because we'll jump back into that program with Whitman. Any questions? Any comments from the public? As this is a public meeting.
This is some fulfill a statute requirement that we've been reminded of several times. You've always, is, is this the answer to that requirement?
Yeah, it's the, it's the curriculum piece, it's the assessment, it's the goal setting, it's the assessment of those goals, if you will.
I wonder if it's something that, um, our, our usage of social media at the moment, um, I think does really well. I wonder if utilizing information like this on there, like, this is where our numbers are at. This is what we're doing to better that, you know? Be very, very blatantly honest and throw it out there publicly. I think, I think people would respect that.
Yeah, yeah, and this will be on our website as well. The summary and the actual plan. Highlighting those things that you don't hear about a lot, like the A C T comparison. Well, what is twenty-one point eight mean to us when we set a goal of twenty-two? Well, twenty-two is a pretty good number, good size number on A C T. And if we're above that as of right now from this past round of testing, you know, I, those types of things need to be out.
For sure.
Social media and social media.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just understand, does this constitute the annual public meeting and this present us right now? And then we will be approving it in this meeting, right?
Yep, that was the plan because the curriculum committee's already looked at it and we just need to prove it here.
Cause there, that question came up about when, when is the annual meeting and when this is?
We've added, he didn't remember, December, I forget.
Yeah.
So I would look for a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three World's Best Workforce Plan Doc and the accompanying information.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joe Lynn. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the plan document, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie. Thank you. Nathan, you weren't on the docket, but you are now. Why don't you step up and tell us what's been going on?
Step up? Oh, gosh. I'll, I'll just face the camera.
You can stand.
I'll just, I'll face the cameras.
Okay.
So I don't really have much. Not much has happened. We just had our Thanksgiving break. Students really, um, enjoyed that. There was a lot that happened before November fourteenth, so if you're interested in what happened before, you can check out that meeting. So, but last week, um, M H S members volunteered for STEAM night at the elementary school, um, which was really fun. The kids were really, um, excited about the bomb bots robot. They, um, the team brought that down to the elementary school and some of the kids got to drive it, which was, that, that was really cool for them. So hopefully, when they get older, they might seize that opportunity there. And then M H S members also rang the bell, um, for Salvation Army, um, during Deck the Falls and Family Fair. I just checked, uh, before I left, um, my house, the lantern, um, has gotten, we received three badges so far from snow sites. And we need three more to get our distinguished site award. It's a national competition that we participate in. And we've gotten the award for like six years in a row now. So, um, that was really exciting to see that we got three badges so far, so we need three more to go. This week and last week, winter sports and activities started. The dance team held their winter preview, um, on Saturday, um, November, not this Saturday, but the Saturday before. So that was, they had a few teams come and they got to see each other's routines and stuff. And then they had the invitational this weekend here at Canopals. Wrestling has an invitational and Faribault this weekend. Girls' basketball has their first game tomorrow in Randolph. And the boys' basketball has their game against Randolph too on Thursday. And then today after school, the speech team had their first meeting, um, of the year. So they'll pick out some scripts and everything and get going on that. And then Math League has had a couple practices so far. And I believe, um, Mr. Coleman is looking for more members, so, uh, definitely keep note of that. But otherwise, um, that's really all I have. Um, I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving break.
The STEAM night was super, very impressive.
Yeah.
It was a ton of fun. We went, we brought the kids, they loved it, they loved the robots.
The bouncy house, the bouncy house. That was like the center.
And the robots, they got a huge kick out of the robots, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it was awesome.
I think the only thing, after talking to like the teacher volunteers and stuff like that that were there, is that we had said, maybe we should make this school a little bit longer time period. Because it definitely got to a certain time where it was like, whoa, that was it, time was up. Guys, I've got to leave now.
I was in charge of the little connect the circuits.
Yeah.
The kid didn't want to leave and I was like, you gotta go.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Definitely.
No, I mean, it was, you want to talk, we were, I mean, we were definitely shoulder to shoulder.
Yeah, it was a good turnout.
Thank you, Nathan. Moving down, public input. Comments are welcome from students, residents of the district, taxpayers of the district, people with children in the district and employees of the district. It must relate to school business and not exceed five minutes. The board cannot engage in discussion during the comment period, but will take the information and find answers if it is appropriate. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Individual complaints should be handled privately with billing administrators and/or the suit. As a part of the board, protocol is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassinations at a public board meeting. Having said that mouthful, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the district? Moving on. Consideration to approve the finance report. Sir?
Well, you've got the, uh, the cash flow worksheet you will see from most of our finance reports. Uh, we get to a time of the year now where, uh, things are maybe, you know, be necessarily less hectic in the finance portion of it, but certainly aren't as many odd things that you'll see through there. Pretty standard. You've got your ideas statements, the fifteenth, the thirtieth, and your payroll, like, will get out on the fifteenth and the thirtieth. A couple things to note, and we've talked about this quite a bit. Supply side really is what it is, but in the top there, I keep moving down the bus purchase, the van purchase and the other van purchase. And, uh, they're just not ready to be in process, we may get. So, uh, they're all in the budget for twenty-three to, um, happen and occur. And they're all things that we need to have happen and occur as we've talked about. Those vans are only good, uh, for twelve years. Not that the vehicle itself isn't, but in order for us to safely use it to transport kids, uh, they have to be within twelve years. So, uh, most likely, if we can't get those vans before, I believe May is the time when the ones got to go. We're looking at the possible extension of the state. And that has been pretty common during COVID time now to have to extend some of those because it's just hard to get the vehicles, uh, whether it be chip shortage or supply shortage or whatever it may be. So as we get closer there, we'll be looking at those events. We can't get the vans themselves in. The C C C roof that payment the balance there, one hundred thousand, we've already made progress building on that. You've probably seen or heard, uh, you know, if you can't really kind of buy the C C C without the smell of, uh, the, the tar that being worked on. But, um, it is watertight now. I think they're to the point of doing gravel and some of the finalizing around the, the edges. But, um, it'd be nice when that is all wrapped up and to have done before the snow will, uh, completely takes over. Depending on what does or does not come here in the next year or two. Other things to look at, you'll see, uh, the side there, a, a large number, nine hundred fifty thousand dollars for, uh, the two thousand twenty-two weight project reimbursement. And as, uh, we've followed, we've got a better interest rate. And as, uh, we've, uh, followed, we've got a better interest rate in our, uh, holding account for the funds for the building project. Uh, and we have, uh, cash on hand right now and cash flow. So what we've done is pay for some of the bills that we've been receiving, progress bills, whether it be design and development or some of the costs now for the CCC roof itself, uh, through the, uh, general checking account, and we'll reimburse ourselves out of that building fund. But, uh, as we can earn more interest currently, I, I most trust will let those dollars sit there. And probably gonna need as many dollars in that project, uh, balance as we can by the time we get there, whether it be, um, you know, contingency dollars or, uh, you know, supply sort of thing, or even labor by the time we get to that point in, in the salary to take care of. I know that some of the bidding came in pretty favorably, uh, but, uh, the unknowns are the unknowns. And we want to make sure that we put ourselves in the best position, uh, not only for the district, but for the taxpayers, um, to get the best bank through the block. So we'll do our best to get as much interest on those dollars to put them back into the project. Uh, and that's why you'll see that number as large as it is. It really is just a payment back to the general fund itself. Um, a general fund here. So if you, if I say the general funding, uh, and we talk more, we do our finance needs. The general checking account has not only the general fund, but debt service in there as well. So a lot of funds make up those dollars, not just the general fund, uh, amount itself. Um, other than that, you'll just see the direct amounts and outs of board bills, uh, payroll, and then the ideas payments coming in. So, uh, as we talked about, no need for the anticipation bar, which is a good thing. That wasn't always the case for us. Sort of a decent position cash flow wise. Again, it's not the same as fund balancing as you go through those fund talks or the financial talks, we'll get more into that, but, um, cash flow wise, we're okay. Kind of the, the quick and easy of that. If you have any questions, let me best answer when you re- mail.
Question for Josh.
Not so much for Josh, but the, the CCC roof, is that, did we have a date where we thought they would be done? Are we on track or are we not so much?
I think it's maybe gone longer than what I thought it was going to, what Davis thought it was going to, and, yeah. I don't have a good answer for that, and some of that could be labor involved, um, supply involved. But, um, I know initially it was, it was put off for, was it a couple of weeks? And then when they got started, I thought it would only be at the most a couple of week, uh, process, but it has turned into that. I'm not a roofer of schools, and I don't know if Mike has any information on that.
Um, so part of the delay is the old roof didn't come up as good as they thought it was going to. So that, that added a little extra time and like Jeff mentioned, um, material and labor issues as well, so. Um, I believe the roof, the roofing part is complete. They are waiting on the metal capping for top of the parapet now.
So they got the gravel down?
Yep.
Okay. So they don't have to worry about the snow as much?
Correct, yep. Last Monday and Tuesday, they got the final, uh, left gravel down and it's watertight now, so.
I'm sure they're, they, they knew it was gonna be this nice up to this point. So, yeah, if it's the metal flashing, then that's probably a supply issue, I'm guessing?
Yeah, it's, it's being manufactured early speak, so.
Okay. I'll still do it when it's cold outside, I guess.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? I look for a motion to approve the finance report as told.
I'll move to approve.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion? All in favor of the finance report approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Spinning the page here, consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In event the board no longer wants to discuss any single item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. We usually begin this consent agenda with Jeff, uh, recognizing the acceptance of gifts.
Yes. Uh, tonight we have six thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars from three M for school supplies. Fifty dollars from the James and Patricia Moseur for flexible seating chairs for the elementary. Uh, a thousand pencils from Cannon Computers for school supplies. That was awesome, by the way. That is a lot of pencils.
Oh, you might be surprised.
There's little fingers, I get into those, isn't there? Uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars from community donations for the state playoff fan bus. Fifteen hundred dollars from the Cannon Falls Fire Department for theater donation. Hundred and thirty dollars from the Cannon Falls Ed Foundation for Ojibwe beating project for Missy Clapper. Six thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-two cents, uh, from the Cannon Falls Volleyball Inc. for volleyball nets. Hundred and forty dollars from Alex and Heidi Ostberg and family for gloves for the nurses office. So we do thank your donations for that. That is.
Does anyone have any questions? And again, thanks to the people that are consistently giving us lucrative gifts in all, in all ways. Have a chance to review the minutes from our two previous meetings and when you're ready, I would look for a motion to approve.
How's the, um, community ad activity secretary, is that, is that held or?
It's posted.
Posted now? I didn't know that we were losing after.
Twins, I think they're.
Oh.
I see there's another, uh, para tire. Is that getting us close to where we need to be? It's a preschool para, I see, but.
Yeah, that was for somebody who left, so now part of the. I'm so short. I don't know what that is.
One. One short?
Mm-hmm.
And that's posted actively as soon right now? Cool. I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Luke on the motion for approval?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joel Lynn. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye. Opposed? Carry. Soup report.
Yes, I just have a couple of items here. Uh, the certificates of election and the oath of office of acceptance of the office were administered in the district office for Joel Lynn, Bill, Clinton, and Luke, uh, following the seven-day waiting period. Uh, the ceremonial oath of office and acceptance of office will be administered at the January organizational board meeting, which is the first board uh, of the year. And finally, uh, MSBA leadership conference is coming up. I think all of you, uh, except for maybe Brenda, uh, who won't be with us. But, uh, I think you've gotten everybody taken care of for phase one and phase two, which is required. It's good to take it in person, but obviously if you need to do virtual, that's, that's fine. And then we'll talk about more details to come on that once we get closer to the, um, conference and when we'll help you guys check in and, uh, get you guys set up for dinners and stuff like that. Any questions?
Not an action item, so thank you for the input.
Yep.
We have no old business. Under new business, consideration to approve a leave in accordance with teacher master agreement, Article ten, Lease of Abstence, Section ten, child care leave, March twenty through May twelve.
Yes, this is for Sam Neiman in the elementary school and I recommend approval.
Look for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Luke on the motion, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joel Lynn. Other discussion? All in favor of approval of this leave, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. I guess the term would be leave. Consideration to approve the Wells concrete for the CTE addition project.
Yes, this bid amount, uh, Carl Sanderson's been working on that and finally have a soda with Wells concrete, uh, for the tip-up walls for the, uh, CTE addition and the price is for three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And I recommend approval on that.
This was one of the ones that we concerned about timing, right?
Yep.
And I don't, did they update us? Is there any update on that as far as once we approve, is it?
Well, it's kind of, it's in motion. I mean, I mean, there's really, there was one company that bid on it and that's, that could meet the specs for it, so.
Mike, whenever you have comments, just throw them out here.
Okay.
I'd make the motion to approve the Wells concrete.
I'll second.
Who come to motion? Brenda on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of Wells concrete for our addition project, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the bids for the twenty-two bond referendum construction project.
Uh, the rest of the bids were, uh, publicly open on November twenty-second. And just a quick statement here on that process. The bids were opened on, uh, last Tuesday, eleven twenty-two at one thirty P M. Uh, we did have a great bid opening with fifty-eight bidders that were submitted for the twenty separate work scopes, and so, uh, it was phenomenal to see that with the current market that we're in. Carl Sanderson has said that we have not had this bit of a bid response in quite some time, which is encouraging to see. Our HVAC pricing came in fantastic. There were eight HVAC bids that were received and were very competitive, and this is great news for the project as the HVAC work is a large majority of the scope of work for the project, which I think we all understand that. Um, in addition, Carl Sanderson has worked with all of our low bid contractors on past projects, and so these are the ones that we're asking to approve tonight. There were two work scopes, uh, that we did not receive any bids on, uh, but Carl Sanderson is not overly concerned with this as they will be rather easy to get some pricing for. The two work scopes include the carpentry package, which is the walls inside of the new addition. Um, and then the overhead door package as well, and it sounds like Carl Sanderson guys, Chad and, uh, Mike have already been working on getting those quotes, uh, for those two work scopes. And so hopefully they'll come in around the budget area that we had set up for them and, uh, keep us on track. We did come in under bid on the project as a whole, as of right now. As most projects, we can't guarantee that we'll stay under bid, but it's a good starting point at this point, so.
Mike, were you surprised at the number of bidders actually that?
Um, yes, compared to some of the projects we have been out right now, um, we have another project where we had multiple scopes that we didn't have any bidders for. Couple of them were bigger ones, say electrical, um, plumbing. So it was very encouraging to see, um, all of the bidders that had come in for this. I think part of it helps that we were able to reach up into some of our city contractors as well. Cause I, kind of in the middle between our Rochester and the cities, so we advertised a entire group, so it worked out well and I think in the favor of all, so.
And it sounded like you guys feel comfortable with the contractors that are on the lowest bids.
Absolutely.
Of, of each of these ones, the city.
Absolutely.
Differences between bids and quotes. We didn't get two bids, now we can get quotes, correct?
Correct. Um, big quotes, um, so now since we didn't get the bid, we'll reach out to these contractors for quotes. We will still have multiple quotes and we'll take the low quote. There is a dollar amount that has to be under in order for us to do that. I'm not sure of that, um, exact amount, but both of these work scopes, um, are lining up to be under that certain dollar amount where we can, don't have to go back over public bids, so. Hopefully we can get at least three for each one of those, um, work scopes we've been working with. Dave a little bit, getting some input of who he likes working with, so we're reaching out to them and hopefully get some good numbers back for you guys.
So in, in speaking with Chad after the bid openings were over, he felt really good about the number, Chad being the project manager, I think.
Correct, yep.
He felt good about that, but, uh, he sure handed him home. We tried to, we tried to pin him down in materials and the availability of materials.
Yep, so, um, we'll have a better idea of materials once we get contracts awarded. Right now, the market where suppliers won't give us lead times until the, until the actual product's ordered. Um, so, once we get some middles back and approved, they can order them, then we'll have a better idea of lead time after we get that completed.
Does that process start tomorrow after the board approves this?
Um, yes, we'll get the subcontract, um, process started for the, for the, um, trade partners that will be helping us on the project. Then they can start their submittals.
I think the first time we met with Carl Sanderson, there was a lot of concern over the amount of bids that would be coming in, so I was pleased to see. When I went through the Zoom, uh, with them and they all, there was a ton of bids and, uh, it was good to see, Dave. I think they were, they had a lot of concern. I had a lot of concern. We'd have one Z, two Zs, but to see multiples is good.
Yeah, I, I think the two hurdles to get over is to get the materials in yet and then making sure that we can finish on time, depending on which material show up. Obviously, they're still fabricating sheet metal for a roof that we started over a month ago.
What is our estimated roof estimate timeframe?
I think a week before school was the, the first scope in our POC, meaning we had our scope of work and it ended about a week before school started, so not much flexibility currently. But we can believe in that they're gonna get worked on fast and all the supplies are gonna come in on time.
What is the, yeah, I guess it depends what comes in, but, cause the, the HVAC changes things for classrooms, right?
I think, what I understand, and Mike correct me if I'm wrong, I think they can do everything with the HVAC, but they're really, the biggest thing that they're probably waiting on are the actual units right?
The units, correct.
And we may not have units in the fall is probably the biggest concern, and so we wouldn't, we may not start with air conditioning or, uh, what do you call that?
Dehumanification.
Dehumanification in the fall. Um, but we would have to get, uh, we, we, we got something worked out for that. I've talked to Chad and
Backup plan.
We'll figure that out, so.
So we feel good about starting on time and?
I have no reason to believe right now that we would not be starting on time in the fall. I'll let you know if that changes though.
Perfect.
You're smarting.
I'm just wondering what the requirement is for me to ask for a sabbatical.
Everything is fine.
I'd make the motion to approve.
I trust you.
The, the bits.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joel Lynn. Other discussion? Good information, good positive information for the district and let's hope those materials roll. Prices, prices seem okay right now, so that'd be great. So, all in favor of the approval of the bids for the twenty-two bond referendum construction project, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Thank you, Mike. Consideration to approve the twenty-two, twenty-four staff development plan and the twenty-two, twenty-three staff development budget.
Uh, obviously the plan is a, a two-year plan, uh, and this is the plan that is updated from the last two-year plan and the twenty-two, twenty-three staff development budget is a part of this. As you can see, there's many facets to the, uh, to the staff development budget, including PLC meetings, mentoring program, conferences, and travel. Any questions on that?
Budget allowance of two percent, that's a requirement, correct or not?
Yeah. Two percent, two percent is the set aside for it. Uh, it could be for approved to not put it towards that. There is that flexibility in there if it came to that. Been very many years since we've done that. It's important to have that continuing, um, investment in staff and develop that.
I think years ago, we dropped it down to one percent for a couple of years after discussion with our teachers. Can you do this for us?
Yeah, same, just in terms of what, probably, I mean, it roughly, for our district, our size, about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, it's had to go to a little bit of percent.
Make a motion to approve.
Brenda on the motion? Can you hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor of the twenty-two, twenty-four staff development plan and the twenty-two, twenty-three staff development budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Next, consideration to approve a twenty-five hundred dollar Banks Outdoors scholarship and a twenty-five hundred dollar Strike Tool scholarship.
Yes, these would be new scholarships uh, for this year, uh, one is obviously from Banks Outdoors for twenty-five hundred dollars, and the other one is from Strike Tool for twenty-five hundred dollars.
I'm not, no, go ahead, I'll make the motion to approve the scholarships as is.
Motion by Luke?
I'll second.
Brenda? On the second. Any other discussion?
It's for the generous scholarships.
Sure is hard to turn down scholarship money, isn't it? We're a unique school, I think. All in favor of the approval of the twenty-five hundred dollar scholarship from Banks Outdoors and the equal amount from Strike Tool, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just, sorry, I said one further one on that, is it, so they, they will choose, is that standard procedure, is that?
Uh, they, they have a choice, and correct me if I'm wrong, but some businesses choose their own, and some let the school choose it.
Correct, it's, it's kind of all over the place as far as whether they want to select their own recommendation.
Very well. That's all right, so we have a motion to second on the floor, all in favor of the acceptance of these true scholarships, say aye. Aye, aye, opposed, carry. Consideration to approve the updated winter coaching list. What's the new stuff here?
We recommend approval, um, for those names identified and read there. Uh, thankful for them to stepping forward here and covering some holes in what we have for our programming and for our students. Recommend approval?
Relief for you, Reed?
Right here? In the corner.
That's, it's relief for you, right?
Well, absolutely.
How many motion?
Joel Lynn on the motion to approve the updated winter coaching list. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion? All in favor of the twenty-two, twenty-three winter coaching list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Which brings us to some people's favorite part of the meeting, as you can see that uh, what's upcoming. If you have an, an issue that you'd like to have discussed at the board level, please contact Lori or Jeff to check on the feasibility of adding it to our, our future meeting. So at this time, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry, we are adjourned. Thank you.